Good evening, welcome to the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, June 4th, 2014. Could I have a roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
President.
Dan Hagan.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Congressman.
J.P. Kozinski. Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie. Nathan Ziegler.
Okay, will please stand up and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Thank you. Motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved first.
Second.
Motion, second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor.
Aye.
Abstain? No, okay, motion passes. Does anyone here from the public who would like to address the council concerning something other than our public safeties, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Patrick Bruff, and I'm here representing the Greater East Hampton Chamber of Commerce and the Greater East Hampton Spirit Committee, or the East Hampton Spirit Committee, I'm sorry. I just wanted to take a minute to talk to you about a couple of events that are happening in the month of June. Starting with June 12th, our monthly networking by night event for the chamber will be held at North Country Landscaping. That's in West Hampton, and that's going to be a great networking event that we have every month, there's one that comes out. We're actually having two networking events this month, and I'll get to the next one in a minute. The next event is June 14th, which I'm sure you're all very well aware of. That's the Cultural Chaos Event that is happening on Cottage Street. The next one is June 16th, which is a networking event that the chamber is holding along with the Holyoke Chamber of Commerce, and it's called "The Meeting on the Mountain." We're holding it at the Holyoke Country Club, and we're looking for anyone who's interested in coming and mingling with the business community from Holyoke. We're also inviting the mayors from each of the communities, as well as the city councilors, if you're interested in coming. Sorry. And last but not least, June 28th is the East Hampton Spirit Committee's fourth, the fourth year that we're doing the fireworks. And I wanted to just take a minute, the event is Saturday, the 28th, and it will be from 5:00 to roughly 10:30-ish, depending on how long, how late we go into the night as far as when it's going to get dark and we shoot fireworks off. We're looking for folks that are interested in helping us put on this event. This event is done completely by folks in the community. It is not funded by the city, so we're looking for donations, and we're also looking for volunteers to help us that day. It's quite an operation, and it's quite an event. We get anywhere from 10,000 to 15,000 people there, so any help we can get. So if there's anybody out there watching, or any of the city councilors are interested in donating a little bit of time that night, please let me know. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Okay, moving on to communications, what officials, boards, committees. Counselor Rist.
I have, now are we doing correspondence first?
No, I think communications is first.
I'm sorry, okay. Excuse me. We have received this evening, from the council's information, from the Tina Schneider of the East Hampton Retirement Board, a submission, as they are required, of their total budget, which is on the back of the form. And we've also, I'm going to allow the president to speak to the affordable housing issue, which has to be dealt with this evening.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm going to bring that up after mayor communications, but we'll come back to that.
Okay.
Thank you. Correspondents, I do have one, just wanted to let the community aware of, there is an organization out in the city right now called East Hampton Matters, and they're putting on a forum on June 20th and Sunday, June 22nd, and they describe as a community-wide visioning forum, and it's hosting a community-wide municipal budget information and visioning session. And it's both Friday, we have a chance to gather and talk and talk about, talk with each other about what is important to them as residents of East Hampton, and then Sunday will be more of a session to explore some creative ideas of how to work to solve some of our potential budget issues, or just get a consensus on where East Hampton wants to go. So again, that is Friday, June 20th, and Sunday, June 22nd. Additional information can be found at their website, which is www.easthamptonmatters.org. Thank you. Mayor Communications, Mayor Kedger.
Good evening. In front of you, you also have tonight, apologize for the late notice, an appointment for the Licensing Board, and I was hoping maybe you might be able to forward that to your Appointment Subcommittee. And also, I know you also have the Affordable Housing restriction in front of you tonight also. As you're aware, it's been approved by our city attorney, and I was hoping that maybe you might be able to act on that tonight also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'll follow up on what the mayor was just referring to. Back in, my date here.
Over six, it's out.
Exactly. The city council voted 6 to 3 in favor of the appropriation of the CPA money of $200,000, as well as a description to provide for long-term affordable housing. That was in the motion that we approved. And so since that time, there has been further work to further clarify that restriction on the affordable housing, it is in summary a 99-year restriction for, as the property would be affordable, under affordable housing. And so both the city plan and the mayor had asked, unless there was any objection, strong objection, that we could move that tonight, because the developers, I believe, have a proposed closing, and they would hope that we would be able to help them out on here. Since, again, since we have voted and approved both the funding and restriction, this is just a further clarification of the restriction. So if there is out any additional questions, I would like to read the motion, and I would move the city council approved the affordable housing restriction for the property at 71 Parsons Street, East Hampton, and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city of East Hampton. Second. We have a motion, a second for that additional, and the further, the detailed description of the restriction is in the packet. Again, as a summary, it is just adding 99 years to it. Is there any additional discussions or questions? I see people here from Pioneer Valley, they may be able to answer any additional.
motion.
Okay. You're right, never mind. Anyway, is there any, if someone, if a council would like to hear from Pioneer Valley, we'll remove that motion, but otherwise, is there any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. Okay, so now we have some time to move on to standing committees, rules of government relations, Counselor Rist.
No report this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Finance, Counselor Hagan.
We'll take up many issues tonight in finance, including the FY '15 budget, and there's also public hearings on an interdepartmental transfer, a couple of supplemental appropriations, a bonding issue. All those will be taken up tonight. That should clear our agenda, except for the review of elected salaries and other stipends per the city charter, and with regard to that, I'd like to ask for a 90-day extension on that, on that particular item, and I'll do that in the form of a motion.
Second. Okay, motion, a second for 90-day extension on the review of elected salaries and other stipends. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And given that fact, as that's the only item on the agenda, we're probably, in fact, we're not going to have a subcommittee meeting next Wednesday, and we'll move it to the second Wednesday in July, but we'll set that for sure at the first meeting in July.
Okay.
That concludes finance for now.
Public Safety, Counselor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have scheduled a new meeting for the Subcommittee on June 11th at 6:00 PM, and that is in Room 1. We are going to continue our discussions regarding the street acceptances for Kingsbury Way, Bayberry Drive, Birchwood Drive, Willow Circle, and Autumn Drive, and we're also discussing the actual protocol for street acceptances. And that concludes.
Okay, any additional, oh, that's it, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appointments, Counselor Smith.
I would like to make a motion to move the appointment of Kelly Ritchie for the appointment to the Licensing Board, to the Subcommittee of Appointments.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second to move the appointment that the mayor just mentioned, Kelly Ritchie, to the Licensing Board. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I wasn't sure whether she was scheduling a meeting for the next.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would like to recommend that this person be interviewed for this position.
Right.
And it shouldn't be just a poor former thing, so I don't know how you're going to do that without Joy and Nathan.
Yeah, I think, in the meantime, we'll schedule a meeting once we, when Joy's here, and we can schedule, because you're right, I think this is a position that takes more discussion and interviewing.
I agree.
Terrific. So that concludes appointments. Ordinance, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just found out that the planning board just received our request to look at the rezoning of Parsons Street, and they're going to be meeting on it next week, so until we hear from them, we're going to hold off setting our meeting.
Okay.
So that concludes my report.
Okay. And Counselor Derby, do you want to cover?
I can take property. The only thing to report right now, as Counselor Ziegler walks in the door, is that we are meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, and forgive me, but I don't remember which room we're in.
I think you're in Room 1.
Room 1, and we will be discussing the disposition of the Parsons Street School.
Okay. And that concludes.
We're moving ahead of time. Exactly, we'll move on. So, New Business, Acceptance of Gifts, Counselor Rist, did you want to mention the office registry?
All are going to find it first. We would like to make, I'd like to make a motion for the acceptance of gifts, and I'll read it. Pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, approval is hereby given for the acceptance of the following gifts to the city of East Hampton from the East Hampton Savings Bank. Two L-shaped desks, three filing cabinets, two credenzas, five chairs, and one desk unit with credenza. This was executed by the mayor on the 28th of May, and I make a motion that we accept these gifts and thank the East Hampton Savings Bank.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second for the accepting of those gifts, and again, seconding Counselor Rist, the East Hampton Savings Bank has been very generous with their, with their new building and thinking of us with some of their furniture, so again, thank the East Hampton Savings Bank for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. And Counselor Hagan, I believe, the DARE account.
Yeah. Also, on New Business, there's an item brought to our attention by the auditor, that we have an old DARE account that should be closed, and the recommendation is to move that to the donation account of the police department. This does not involve an appropriation, so I don't believe it has to be sent to Subcommittee. So if there's no objection by any of the councilors, I'll make the following motion. I move to close the DARE gift account and move the balance of $2,720.18 to the police department donations account.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second to move the money from the DARE account balance into the police donation account. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. Okay, I, probably close enough, I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing.
I am so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion, a second, open the public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. So begin with, I guess, we'll start off with Counselor Hayes and the public hearing for the Willow Drive and Autumn Circle.
Thank you, Mr. President. We would actually like to close the public hearing for Willow Drive and Autumn Circle this evening. I'd like to make a motion to do that.
Okay, and this is, because you're still working on it, so.
We're still working on it, we're going to have a meeting, we'd like to reschedule it once we've had another meeting.
Okay.
There's a little bit more information that's come through, so we've moved it to the Subcommittee agenda for next week.
Okay. So there's a motion to close the public hearing that we have posted right now on the Willow Drive and Autumn Circle, and just move it back to the Subcommittee Appointments agenda. Public Safety.
Anybody second?
I second. You seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Counselor Hagan.
Our first public hearing tonight is the FY 2015 Municipal Operating Budget. It says $37,305,539.52. And we met, the Finance Committee met on three separate evenings, and we went line by line through the budget, and I thank the Subcommittee members, and also the mayor and Finance Director, and several department heads that came down to those hearings. So I guess at that point, I'll, we would open to any members of the public that want to comment on any particular sections of the budget. We reviewed all 10 sections as listed in.
Yeah, so what we would like to do is, instead of having, asking the public to come up for each section, if there's anyone here who would like to address the council on any of these 11 sections, this is your time to do it, or any department heads or the mayor who would like to make a comment before we move forward, this would be the time, so not seeing any, uh, counsel, I'm counsel, Mayor Kedger.
Hello again. I just actually really want to extend my gratitude to the council for all the time that you spent on the budget, especially the Finance Subcommittee and the department heads that attended to represent their departments. A lot of meetings and a lot of times were put into it, and I also want to especially thank Melissa for all the time she spent with me going over these, and as you know, this budget is pretty tight. I guess tighter than tight is probably the best way to describe it, so I just want to thank you for your time and diligence in getting it on this agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public, or the administration, or offices? Okay, Counselor Hagan then. Or Counselor Rist.
Right, turn it over to Counselor Rist to start.
Before I begin, I would also like to thank the mayor, and especially Finance Director Zawoski, for what they did on this budget. This is the mayor's first budget, and I want all of the residents who might be watching this to know that the mayor and Finance Director went over it, and it was obvious to us on the Finance Committee, line by line, and dealt with, in a multimillion-dollar budget, dollars and cents, trying to pull water from stone to get the budget to balance and to get money where it was needed, especially in the schools. They increased the budget in the schools larger than it has been increased in previous years. Not enough, obviously, for what we would like, and that is not the fault of this administration. There's a lot of ways we could point at why the school department has had to issue positions being cut, et cetera, but I would like to say that they did the best they could, and it was obvious to me that every single line in this budget was looked at, and I appreciate that, and I know the council, once they have read this budget, they would understand that, and I thank them. That being said, I will move Section 1, General Government. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,663,315.21 for the various departments listed under Section 1, General Government, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred, as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee, for Water Enterprise, $48,587.22, and for Sewer Enterprise, $54,022.94.
That's your second.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second for the appropriations of General Government. Any additional discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Under Section 2, Public Safety, I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,031,167.4 for the various departments listed under Section 2, Public Safety, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, as recommended by the mayor and the Finance Subcommittee.
Second.
A motion, a second of the $5,031,067.4 appropriation for Public Safety. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Section 3, The Schools. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,750,000 for the various departments listed under Section 3, Schools, and the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, with the following amount to be transferred, as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee. Free cash, $175,000.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second for the school appropriation of $15,750,000. Any additional discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Section 4, Public Works. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,516,675.84 for the various departments listed under Section 4, Public Works, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, with the following amounts to be transferred, as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee, for Water Enterprise, $203,503, for Sewer Enterprise, $170,045.45, sale of lots, $2,500, parking fund, $4,000.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second for the appropriation of $1,516,675.84 for Public Works. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. Section 5, Counselor Smith.
Section 5, Human Services. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $574,144.15 for the various departments listed under Section 5, Human Services, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second for the appropriation of $574,144.15 for Human Services. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Section, Section 6, Cultural and Recreation. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $532,440.40 for the various departments listed under Section 6, Cultural and Recreation, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, with the following amount to be transferred, as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee, one, I'm sorry, $10,000 to the Emily Williston Library Donation Account.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for the Section 6, Cultural Recreation, appropriation of $532,440.40. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and Section 7, Debt and Interest. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,377,883.26 for the various departments listed under Section 7, Debt and Interest, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, with the following amounts to be transferred or raised, as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee. $147,785 for Water Enterprise. $329,396.83 from Sewer Enterprise. $72,156.93 to, I'm sorry, from Enterprise Retained Earnings. $1,566,875 to Debt Exclusion Taxation, and finally, $5,479 from the debt exclusion taxation to be reduced by reserves for amortization.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second for approval of Section 7, Debt and Interest, for a total of $2,377,883.26. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
I have one more. Section 8, Employee Benefits. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,245,003 for the various departments listed under Section 8, Employee Benefits, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, with the following amounts to be transferred, as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee. $176,109.99 to Water Enterprise, and $375,000, I'm sorry, $375,096.77 to Sewer Enterprise.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second for approval of Section 8, Employee Benefits, for a total of $7,245,003. I mean, is there any additional discussion? Counselor Hagan?
I just wanted to thank Counselor Smith for helping out the Finance Committee with all the reading notes tonight.
No problem. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. Section 9.
Moving on to Section 9, Community Preservation. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $445,330 for the various departments listed under Section 9, Community Preservation, and the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, with a total amount to be raised and appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund, as recommended by the mayor and the Finance Subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second to approve Section 9, Community Preservation, for a total appropriation of $445,330. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Recommend Section 10, Enterprise. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,169,620.62 for the various departments listed under Section 10, Enterprise, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, with the following amounts to be transferred, as recommended by the mayor and the Finance Subcommittee. Water Enterprise, $708,191.78. Sewer Enterprise, $1,461, excuse me, $1,461,428.84.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second approval of Section 10, appropriation of $2,169,620.62. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining? Motion passes.
And there's one other item that we need to do every year on the budget, which is new since we created it, and I'll read the following motion. Under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Excuse me, Subsections 53E, one-half, the city of East Hampton establishes a departmental revolving fund, Sharps Disposal Program, for the Board of Health, for the collection of fees for Sharps Disposal, to be used for the expenses and costs related to the program, not to exceed $2,000 a year in FY 2015.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second for the additional reading related to Sharps Disposal Program, budget. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Close the budget.
Congratulations.
Unfortunately, I think, does that still use to be, the paper plan? Are difficult?
Oh, no, we're going, that's, yeah, you're still that.
Did you give Bob Elberti a hug?
I know, you guys high-fiving each other.
I know, but I'm calling Bruce Bob Elberti.
Our next public hearing is in reference to a city ordinance change, and I'll do a reading on it. It's to amend Chapter 7, Sections 7 through 18, Classification and Pay Plan. Exhibit B is salaries and wage scale by substituting the existing Exhibit B dated December 31st, 2012, with a new Exhibit B dated July 1st, 2014, and to establish the effective date of July 1st, 2014. This is somewhat of a housekeeping matter, and this is, given the rise in COLA that were given to the pay plan employees, and this is just their new schedule as to grade and step increases, steps 1 through 9.
Relating to cost of living.
Cost of living.
If there's anyone from the public administration who would like to address the council concerning this appropriation, please come up. But, okay, not, I mean, it's ordinance, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, not seeing any Counselor Hagan, I guess it's still yours.
I'll make the following motion, that we approve a change in the city ordinance, amending Chapter 7, Sections 7 through 18, Classification and Pay Plan, Exhibit B, Salary and Wage Scale, by substituting the existing Schedule B, excuse me, Exhibit B dated December 31st, 2012, with a new Exhibit B dated July 1st, 2014, and to establish the effective date as July 1st, 2014.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for the approval of the new July 1st, 2014, Pay Plan classification. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Our next public hearing tonight is an interdepartmental transfer of, and I'll do a second reading on this. This is dated May 15th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $10,500, and to be transferred from Sewer and Wastewater Treatment Reserve Fund in the amount of $6,000, and Water Reserve Fund in the amount of $4,500, dollars, and transferred to Wastewater Treatment Plant Overtime, two thousand dollars, Sewer Overtime, four thousand dollars, Water Overtime, four thousand, five hundred dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to provide funds for a shortfall in overtime. The reason for the shortfall in these particular items is twofold. One, there was a few unanticipated emergencies such as broken water pipes, plugged damaged sewer lines, and also there was two unexpected medical leaves inside the wastewater treatment plant, and this appropriation or this interdepartmental transfer will cover that, those overtime accounts until the end of the year, fiscal year.
If there's anyone from the administration, finance director, or public who would like to address this interdepartmental transfer, please come to podium. Okay, not being seen, then Counselor Hagan.
I'll make the following motion, that the council approve interdepartmental transfer in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred dollars, and it be transferred from Sewer and Wastewater Treatment Reserve Fund, six thousand, and Water Reserve Fund, four thousand, five hundred dollars, and transferred to Wastewater Treatment Overtime, two thousand dollars, Sewer Overtime, four thousand dollars, Water Overtime, four thousand, five hundred dollars. The amount requested used for the following purpose: to provide funds for a shortfall in overtime.
Second.
Second. We have a motion of second for the approval of the interdepartmental transfer of ten thousand dollars, five, ten thousand, five hundred dollars. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Next is one of two supplemental appropriations, and I'll do a second reading on that, dated April 28, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is thirty thousand dollars, and it should be appropriated from Enterprise Retained Earnings, thirty thousand dollars, and appropriated to Water Capital Purchase, thirty thousand dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund the capital purchase of a right-angle gear drive for the Non-Ittuck Park Water Pumping Station. This was approved unanimously by the finance subcommittee and Superintendent Pipchinsky, I believe was there that night, or could have been, I think it was the superintendent. And what this does is, it upgrades the, this particular pumping station, so in the event that the power goes out, it's a much more efficient way to keep water moving through our systems, dating back like to times like the storm a couple of years ago in October. And it's just an upgrade to the system. I don't know if Counselor Riss wants to add anything. It was kind of a technical explanation by the director of why this is so much better, but it's a, it's a matter of coming back and pushing a button and getting it all going and keeping the water flowing, because we don't like to use, I guess there is a few backup wells that we don't like to use unless we have to, because that has, you know, some of them have put an additional strain on the wastewater, excuse me, the freshwater treatment.
Is there anyone from the public or the administration offices who would like to address this supplemental appropriation? Any questions counselors may have for anyone from public? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure, I'll make the following motion, that the council approve the following supplemental appropriation dated April 28, and that the amount requested is thirty thousand dollars to be appropriated from Enterprise Retained Earnings, thirty thousand, and appropriated to Water Capital Purchase. The amount requested will be used to fund the capital purchase of a right-angle gear drive for the Non-Ittuck Park Water Pumping Station.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second for the supplemental appropriation of thirty thousand dollars from Enterprise Retained Earnings to Water Capital Purchase. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Our next public hearing is another supplemental appropriation, and I'll do a second reading on that, dated April 28, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is ninety-eight thousand dollars, and it should be appropriated from the stabilization fund, ninety-eight thousand dollars, and appropriated to police prior-year retro FY 2013 in that amount, thirty thousand dollars, and FY 2014 retro, full-time, regular, forty-nine thousand dollars, incentive, four thousand dollars, holiday, three thousand dollars, court, one thousand dollars, officer in charge, five hundred dollars, all overtime accounts, ten thousand dollars, and vacation sick payout, five hundred dollars, for a total for FY 14 of sixty-eight thousand dollars. The amount requested is used for the following purpose: to provide retro funds for the police contract.
Second.
That was just a second reading. Yeah, that's right, yeah, no, that's right.
It was long.
Is there anyone here from the public or administration who would like to address this appropriation? If you don't mind, Melissa, if I could ask you some questions. I'm pretty sure I know the answer on this, but this appropriation is essentially the 1.5 salary increase that was.
Right over for 13 and 14.
For 13 and 14. So it's just basically appropriation to follow the contract that we agreed to, correct? Okay. Any additional questions?
And it's currently for 15, it's in our 15 budget, correct?
Correct.
So that's, and then the police have one more year of the contract, and then one more year of this 15, they have the, and then they'll be renegotiating.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Hagan, now I'll take it.
Now I'll make the following motion, that the council approve supplemental appropriation of ninety-eight thousand dollars, and it be appropriated from stabilization in that amount, ninety-eight thousand, and appropriated to police prior-year retro FY 13 of thirty thousand, and FY 14 retro of full-time, regular, forty-nine thousand, incentive, four thousand, holiday, three thousand, court, one thousand, officer in charge, five hundred, all overtime accounts, ten thousand, and vacation sick payout, five hundred, for an FY total of sixty-eight thousand dollars. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose: to provide retro funds for the police contract.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the supplemental appropriation of ninety-eight thousand dollars to fulfill police contractual agreements. Any additional discussion? Counselor Hagan?
I would just want to say that the one question that did come up, and the finance committee did ask the mayor, we're always very hesitant to take any money out of stabilization. But as the mayor explained at this state of the year, that's the only place she had to fund the, fund the, the retro, and to remind the chair that it does require a two-thirds vote on stabilization.
Counselor Riss?
Just so the council is aware, this is the retro part that's being paid for stabilization. The budget we just approved paid for.
In second.
Yeah.
Paid for the raises for the next year. So this isn't something that's ongoing out of stabilization, just us one time.
Any additional comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion, in a second, for all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
The final public hearing tonight is a bonding and borrowing of, and I'll do a second reading on this, dated May 14. It's a two-mayor cadure, and the request is made for the following amount requested is one hundred and ninety-five thousand is to be funded by borrowing, and is to be borrowed or bonded for cost of completing the design permitting, bidding, construction of open space recreational facility at Non-Ittuck Park. As you recall, this, Mr. Mason was here at our last council meeting, and this is a grant that has been received and will hopefully be paid by the state grant, and, but we have to put up the appropriation upfront to prove that if something goes wrong, we have it. And I know Mr. Mason's here, if he'd like to come up and just give us another snippet of what.
Sure.
If you could just state your name and position for the record, that'd be terrific.
John Mason, Parks and Recreation Director. Yeah, as I stated in previous meetings, this is a funding source that Governor Patrick wanted to have on his agenda, our common backyard playground grant. So we have moved along, and we did the, the design work upfront at no cost, things like that. So the state is requiring that this project be completed and reimbursed back to the city by year-end. So by December 31, we need to have this project completed and all reimbursements back to the city. So the design, we can't do anything until after July 1, so if there's any, anybody from the public that would like to come into our office and see the design that we put in place, you know, discuss any changes, things like that, we're open to that as well. We maintained a, a wood theme that would, you know, kind of blend into the park setting, so. And this will also help fund refurbishing the spray park as well, is all part of this grant.
Counselor Hagan?
Could you just explain what the project, I guess, is wood, just to?
Do you have the design with you?
A short.
Yes, I do have the design plans with me.
A short explanation of what it is that, you know, you're doing besides the spray park?
The playground itself is going to be broke, it's, it's going to be into two parts, so there's going to be a two-to-five-year-old section. We felt that was a need for, for the city to provide. And then the other side is going to be five-to-12, and there's swings and various play structures that are age-appropriate and ADA-appropriate. The material that'll be put down will be ADA-appropriate as well.
Since you're there, Mr. Mason, if you just, could you just point to what you're talking about, just so?
Yeah, sure. This, this here is going to be more of the older kids, five-to-12. There's going to be a pre-cask concrete treehouse that looks wood, but it's going to be able to long, last long-term. And then over here, the structure here in this area over here will be for the younger kids. There's some small slides and things like that. We will be ripping out the equipment that's down there. It'll be in the same footprint as the current playground, which is next to Sheen and Coughlin Field.
Also near the Little League fields.
Yeah, it'll be, yeah, it'll be right there.
Do you, do you have a materials list for what will be used? Because I know people get really concerned about products that, off-gas, how they're treated, that kind of?
Yeah, and the specs, I believe there's.
I don't need to write this second.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're, we're dealing with a company that deals with this on an everyday basis. They've done the Holyoke one over here. So, yeah, we're going to make sure that those materials are.
Great.
Any additional questions from Mr. Mason? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted, Mr. President, I just want to tell you, my, this is replacing that spinning, what do you call, what do you call those things that, that kids play on? What?
Merry-go-round.
Merry-go-round thingy? Is that the park that?
No, that, that one's at the top of the hill. That one's staying there. It's the one inside the park.
There's not a merry-go-round on the hill?
Do you mean that, that thing that's a circle with spokes out on it and kids fly off of?
Is that, that the one?
That's awesome.
Down by Sheen, I thought it was.
That's up top.
Well, my daughter broke her arm on that one, so.
John, I have a question for you. You said that the spray park was going to be getting some?
Yes.
And I didn't notice that on the plans, is?
The, the plans for that, we just met with him yesterday, because we're looking at a surface that, that, as the season goes along, gets a little slick using, you know, the, the current surface down there, so we're going with a, a grainier concrete surface. So those plans, he knows that he has to get to me sooner than later.
And how much of an expansion is it, is it?
For the spray park, they'll be, they'll be just adding two, the footprint's staying the same.
Right.
Adding two more water features, and then redoing the surfacing.
Okay.
And then the playground will be sixty-five deep, but I want them to actually go a little bit deeper and about 120 wide.
No changes to the pool?
Hmm?
No changes to the pool?
No, nothing, no changes to the pool.
My, my only suggestion is, at some point, it makes you keeping your eyes open for something to get that pool, so it doesn't look so much like a prison in the summer. That would be wonderful. But I think, great job on finding this, and I think it's going to be really beneficial for, for all the kids.
Yeah, we're very excited. It'd be great for the community.
Nicely done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, I'll start with you, Mr. Mason. Finance directors will ask a few of mine coming up, I know probably a few questions. So first of all, let me thank you for multitasking there. That was very nice of you to help us out that direction. Yeah, I think we talked about this a little bit, finance. So this is a requirement that we have the borrowing in place. The idea is that we probably won't have to go out to borrow before the grant comes in, is that the?
Right, so the requirement is that you either appropriate the total cost of the project from, I don't know, fund?
Stables.
Or, or you, or you authorized to borrow the entire cost of the project, so that, you know, that, because it's a reimbursement grant, this funding agency wants to make sure that you can move forward with the project, and that, before they award it, you know, before they agree to commit the full award to you, so that you don't hold up the project waiting on money that, to get money in order to move forward. It's really a security for them. Typically, we have a lot of reimbursement grants. Not all awarding authorities ask us to set aside an appropriation for every single award we get. This agency does.
But, but the plan, I, hopefully, we will have the grant money, and before we have to borrow it, is that a plan, or do you think we'll actually have to start borrowing?
I don't, I don't anticipate that, because typically, we, we pay for it in sections and ask for reimbursement in sections, so we're not actually going to pay for 195 right off the top. We'll probably pay 50,000, ask for 50,000 to be given back, and we'll spend the next 50,000. That's typically how these things work.
Okay. Any additional questions for?
Is there interest on that?
If we were to borrow, there would be, but.
Right, but because we're paying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any additional questions for finance director? Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Counselor Hagan? Oh, that's right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council concerning that appropriation? Just come to the podium, just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeff Fag. I live at 49 Taft Avenue, and I learned about this very recently, so admittedly, I lack a little bit of knowledge about the project, but Mr. Mason just showed me the plans, and it's obvious that a lot of people have already thought about this and sought the grant funding source. So I would like to just say that I think this is a great, great option, great opportunity for, for Non-Ittuck Park and for everybody who lives in East Hampton. We have a two-and-a-half-year-old and another one on the way, and we think that Non-Ittuck is a great asset, so anything done to continue to improvement is great. And so I'd like to thank Mr. Mason and anyone else who's been involved with this. Again, I admittedly learned about it very recently, but we're very supportive of it, and we think it's a great idea.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And is there anyone else, I don't think, from the public who'd like to address the council? I don't think so. Okay, Counselor Hagan?
I'll make the following motion, and bear with me, it's a little bit of a long one. I move that 195,000 dollars is appropriated to pay costs of completing the design permitting, bidding, and construction of a new open space recreational facility, Non-Ittuck Park Playground and Spray Park, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, through the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow 195,000 dollars to pay the cost of the recreational facility under and pursuant to chapter 44, section seven, subsection two of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore, and that the Non-Ittuck Park Playground, excuse, Non-Ittuck Park Playground and Spray Park be dedicated to the active park and recreational purposes under Mass. General Law, chapter 45, section three, to be managed and controlled by the Parks and Recreation Commission of East Hampton, and that said commission be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the City of East Hampton to effectuate the development of the park, and said commission to further authorize to file on behalf of the city any and all applications deemed necessary for the grants and/or reimbursements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the Our Common Backyards Grant Program to develop the park.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second for the borrowing, to approve borrowing bonding request of 195,000 dollars. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
I just want to, I just want to, again, thank John and the rec. department for finding this opportunity and bringing it to Non-Ittuck Park. I think this is a great, I mean, Non-Ittuck Park is such a great place and such a gem, and anything we can do to add on to it. And I also want to clarify my statement. I wasn't calling the park pool a prison. I just, I spent just about every day there in the summer, and, and I would love, at some point, to see that, you know, rehabbed as well. So, nice job.
Exactly. Any additional comments or questions? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. Except a motion to close the public hearings.
So moved.
Okay, a motion of second, close the public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, we have a motion of second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. So remember, this is summer now, so we don't have a late June meeting, so our next meeting will be July 2.